My name is Jonathan Adams. I'm the president of the Civics Club here at New St. Andrews College, which organizes the event, and I will be the moderator for the forum this afternoon. Let's begin with prayer. Father in heaven, we thank you for your grace and truth, and that you have called us to live in the light of that grace and truth. And we thank you for today's candidate forum. We thank you that we live in a country and at a time when we have the freedom to hold events like this. We ask for your blessing on this afternoon's forum. We ask that you would bless the candidates as they communicate their thoughts to us. We thank you for their desire to serve our city in this capacity. We remember Ben Stellman and his family and their loss. Please give them hope and comfort. Give us attentive hearts and minds as we consider the candidates' words today. Thank you for all of this, and we commit our time to you now, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Dr. Urb will now lead us in the first stanza of Amazing Grace. Once again, thank you for coming to the candidate forum. The intention for this forum is to provide an opportunity for the candidates to describe their proposed policies and beliefs to the voters. It is not our purpose to attack any candidates for their views. The invitation to the event has been extended to all candidates for the open seats on the Moscow City Council this year. At this time, I would like to invite the candidates and panelists onstage. Please be seated behind your name card, which are in alphabetical order by last. A note: Mr. Scott Sumner was not able to be in attendance today, but he has a representative bringing answers to his questions. Thank you also to our student panelists, Paul Merle, Eleanor Murphy, and Jack Landis. Each candidate will be given two minutes for self-introduction, and a total of two minutes per response to answer questions from the panelists. Our timekeeper is Louis Stalby in second front row. Please wave. When the speaker's time begins, he will hold up the green card. When the speaker has one minute remaining, he will hold up the yellow card. And when the speaker has 10 seconds remaining, he will hold up the red card. Welcome to all of you, our candidates. Thank you very much for coming. We are glad to have you here, and we will begin our two-minute introductions with you, Mr. Turucio. Oh, the microphone's on the other end. My apologies.
Okay, can you hear me? What do you say we just skip this part and sing some more? That was awesome. I am Gina Turucio. I moved here in 1994 with two cats, two dogs, two kids, and a Dodge Neon. I came over the hill, and it was beautiful. It was sunny and kind of great, and like an hour later, it was snowing. But what I did intentionally that morning was decide to set my roots in Moscow. I took my kids and put them in St. Mary's School, and now they are grown-up vandals with children of their own. And I would say that Moscow has raised all of us. Now, after almost 10 years of experience on the city council, I remain committed to the concept that government is best, closest to the people. And for me, this is it. It doesn't get any closer than what we're doing right now. I continue to want to be eager, to be eager and excited and ready to serve the community for more years. It is taking care of the people that I care about and the place that I care about, and I wouldn't change a thing. Thank you.
All right. I want to thank everyone for coming tonight, and NSA for putting on this event. My name is John Freeland, and I'm standing in for Scott Sumner, as he's watching his daughter play in the girls' soccer state tournament this weekend. I will be reading Scott's responses to the questions that were provided beforehand. And yes, everyone was provided the questions beforehand. So here we go, as Scott. "I grew up in Moscow, a block away from Lena Whitmore. I was proud to have my kids going to the same school that I'd attended. I am always someone that has fixed things, so when I saw a broken basketball hoop at the school, I took it upon myself to get it fixed. Of course, that became three or four years of volunteering on the path. In 2019, I co-founded Centure Engineering with the goal of having more of an impact in the local community. It's now grown to three offices and 25 employees. Along with knowledge and expertise in civil engineering and housing development, I've gained a lot of knowledge on what it takes to run a small business and the challenges that small businesses face here on the Palouse. For the last four years, I have been on the City of Moscow Transportation Commission, the last three as the chair. This has given me insight into how commissions and the city councils interact, as well as how they interact with city staff and the public. I'm running for city council because, like our schools and our businesses, our city needs people who are willing to step up, put in the work, and get things done to keep our community the amazing place that it is. Thank you."
Got a whole bunch of wire down here. All right. You can count that towards my two minutes, because I don't have a whole lot to say. My name is John Slagboom. I'm a husband, a father, a friend, and a neighbor. To many of you, I see a lot of happy, happy people out there, and I commend you for that. And I want to thank you for coming here today and to the forum for hosting. I decided to run when I saw that there's an opportunity to give back to the city of Moscow. My career is in process improvement, energy, water, and waste efficiency for Fortune 500s, public universities, public schools, and anything in between. I spend a lot of time reading through hundreds, if not thousands, of pages of legal text and technical documents on a weekly basis. I think all of us on this board are running for probably maybe one of the most boring jobs around, if not for maybe cemetery guy. No one has explained to me what that actually does. Anyways, I believe that I have the right skill set to give back to the city. I'm running on fiscal responsibility, healthy families, and a beautiful Moscow, right now and long into the future. Early voting is available right now, so after this forum, do yourself a favor. Walk up the street to the Latah County Courthouse and vote. And if you want to, vote for Slagboom.
My name is Gary Schoolend. I'm 70 years old, retired, not a courier politician by any means, but I decided to run, and I'm a Christian. I have a large family. I have eight children. I've been married 43 years, and 25 grandchildren, and two more on the way in the spring. So I appreciate that. I've worked hard my whole life, two different jobs, one in a dairy farm and a different dairy farms for 20 years. And then I changed from that, well, mainly because you're married to the cows. And I had six kids at the time, and I couldn't go be the soccer coach. I couldn't do the things I wanted to do with a large family, so my wife and me sat down, and I told her I didn't want to do this when I'm 50 years old. So I was 40 at the time, and we had to make a decision. So I went back to school and got a two-year degree, and top of my class, and ended up going to a fish and wildlife salmon hatchery in Washington, and was there for 23 years. And now I'm here and wanting to serve you. As hard as I worked those 43 years, I'd like to work just as hard for you as a city councilman. Thank you for the time, and again, go vote at the courthouse, but vote for Gary Schoolend.
Well, that segues nicely into the only thing I have to say is vote for Evan Holmes. Nancy and I showed up here more than 30 years ago to go to school, basically. She was going to grad school. So I guess you could take this as a warning. We never got out. So beware. Moscow might just grab you and keep you, as it did us. We stayed here, had our first home, raised kids, participated in all the events that are available, and watched Moscow transform from what it was in the 80s to what it is now. And a lot of what we consider the amenities that attract people here didn't exist when we got here. The bike paths, the swim center, the Hamilton Indoor Rec Center, Paradise Path, all that. So I saw that evolve here and participated in it by being involved in the city boards and commissions, like the Board of Adjustment and on the Paradise Path Task Force, and also volunteered for the Moscow Food Co-op and served on the board, Adventure Learning Camp, Chair of the Board, all those things. And when a town like this grabs you, you know, you give back. And so really, what I want to see is that the next 30 years moves along in the same way, and Nancy and I will be grateful to be held here again for several more decades. The thing I want to leave you with is my belief that this should be a city where anyone who lives here for one year or 40 years feels like they are at home. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our panelists will now ask a question, which each candidate will have two minutes to answer. Panelists will then repeat the question before each next candidate.
All right. Thank you, candidates. For the first question, if you could only focus on one issue pertaining to the city of Moscow, what would it be? Give one of your campaign priorities that distinguishes you from the other candidates. We will start with Mr. Holmes and move our way this way.
Really?
Yeah.
This mic is so cumbersome to move that it might be easier for the candidates to just get up and move. That would be my first priority, but, all right. I see, and this is getting into some of the little details of city council, that we recently have been told by the state that we can no longer manage our area of impact, and so the land that borders Moscow is totally under the control of the county commissioners now in the county. And that changes a lot of our planning. So a top priority for me would be to rework the comprehensive plan with that in mind, and to work closer with the county commissioners to make sure that we get some zoning types and some conversion of ag forest land into the types of uses that benefit both the county and the city. And we're going to have to do that, because that's just been dropped in our laps, and so it has become a priority of mine. Otherwise, I might have come in here and talked about something else. Of course, working on a long-term solution for our water needs and coming up with shorter timelines, less obstacles to building starter homes, so that we have places to house our workforce. I'm not too concerned about people that come here and say, "This is a great town, and we can buy a $700,000 home," and that drives a lot of our market. And as a result, we're losing a place to put plumbers and police officers and teachers, because we, like the rest of the country, are building maybe less than 5% of our new housing starts are first homes. So there's a couple of things. Thank you.
And would you like me to reread the question?
We're good. I just thought you were. So I had a unique opportunity of the 43 years that I worked in my career, two, 20 years in private and 23 years in public. One was in the dairy industry, and one was in the state of Washington for the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife. I managed a privately-owned 1,000 cow dairy and was successful because the money and equipment were managed well. Anything needing repairs, we did it right away. We took care of it. It was prudent with spending, so we could make a profit. I was prudent with spending, so we could make a profit. The state hatchery in my second career did not have a fiscally prudent mindset. I saw a lot of waste. One thing, the hatchery manager I had there, one of his favorite lines was, "There's a taxpayer born every minute." But both public and private need good management of their funds. And as city council member, I would think of the money we have to work with in the budget as yours, mine, and working at prudent spending. Thank you.
In 2019, the Palouse Regional Housing Assessment, which Gina, you signed on to, kudos again, we talked about this the other night, but in 2019, they assessed 350, 375, mid-300s, units shortfall in 2019. 376, thank you, Gina. They also assessed a shortfall that we needed to make up, that shortfall, by building 270 new housing units per year from 2017 through 2027. Housing affects everything. We've had to increase our property taxes by 3% year over year over year to make up for the shortfall of those housing units. Instead of increasing the property tax base, we're increasing the property tax rate, which keeps money out of our wallets, out of the economy, and makes it harder to make jobs happen, and makes it more expensive to buy homes. I don't know how many of you in this room rent, but I do, and that's the issue I want to focus on. I want to be able to buy a house in Moscow. I want my children to be able to buy houses in Moscow if they want. And I want Moscow to be the kind of place where they want to stay. That's my number-one focus: housing and economic development, because those two things go hand in hand.
Thank you. All right. So, housing impacts more than just where people live. Expanding housing opportunities expands our business opportunities and potential as a city. As a small business owner, I've seen my company struggle to hire people from outside the area. It isn't that people don't want to work here. It is that potential employees know they can live in larger markets with higher pay, and sometimes even pay less for housing. And we are not the only business that struggles with this. Housing is continuing to take up a larger percentage of household income. As this happens, that leaves less money for everything else. This means less money is being reinvested back into the economy, hurting our local businesses and community. I know I'm not the only candidate here today concerned about housing, but what sets me apart is my knowledge, experience, and abilities. As a civil engineer who works directly with development and infrastructure in Moscow and around the region, I design and oversee infrastructure projects on a daily basis, utilizing research and critical thinking to guide my decisions. As the Chair of the Transportation Commission, I have firsthand knowledge of how city government works, and I understand what a city can and can't do to incentivize expanding housing. On council, I would work to address our housing needs by, number one, increasing private and public partnerships, and, number two, increasing flexibility in the zoning code to facilitate development. To improve opportunities for housing, we must have support from our local employers: the University of Idaho, Gritman, and the City of Moscow, as well as WSU, the City of Pullman, Pullman Regional Hospital, and Schweitzer Engineering Laboratories are all resources and potential partners. As the largest employers, their ability to expand is most affected by lack of housing. The city can make adjustments to the zoning code, such as lot size allowed uses and parking requirements, to increase the density of homes, as well as to decrease the cost of development. The city could update utility facility charges to be more proportional to the size of the homes, instead of just based on the meter size. Currently, almost all single-family homes fall into the same size. I want people to be able to choose to stay or move to Moscow because they can afford to live here. With my knowledge and experience, I'm ready to get to work improving the achievability of housing in Moscow.
You got going really fast there. That was a lot. Okay, you've heard the issues, right? Water, housing, economic development, which is near and dear to my heart. But for me, and underpinning all of this, I make no judgment about the importance of those issues: water, housing, economic development. But to me, what has happened in the last four or five years is erosion of the key relationships within our city and our county. And we are facing housing, water, and economic development challenges that we are going to need everybody at the table on the same page. And if we don't have that, those challenges are doubly hard, and oftentimes, we won't even get to the table, let me just say, Latah County Jail, as an issue. I believe that it was an erosion of some of the relationships that contributed to some of the shock and awe that occurred as a result of that closing. I believe strongly that we need to start having those players, all of them: Whitman County, the port, everybody, together at the table to start dealing with some of these issues, and continue to understand that we aren't going to do this alone. We need to do it with our partners, and together we will find sustainable water solutions, we will have better housing, and we will have a good economic development, vibrant business community that I hope for.
All right, and you can keep the microphone.
I'm ready.
We'll go down the other direction for this next question. All right, so for this second question, this past summer, the NSA Civics Club examined the city of Moscow's fiscal year 2026 annual budget. What is one expense in the budget that you consider to be an exemplary use of funds? And then, what is one expense that you consider to be a poor use of city funds?
I've been thinking about this all week. Exemplary uses of city funding, in my opinion, or anything to do with streets and anything to do with replacing 100-year-old infrastructure, like ceramic sewer pipes. That's a really good investment in my book. And I thought about what I didn't like and what I'm not particularly proud of, and I will tell you that nine years of blood, sweat, and tears in these budgets, there's not a lot that I am not proud of. I can look at each one of you and say that. I will say, though, that there was one that came back to me, or one issue that came back to me that I'm glad we didn't spend money on. So I thought I'd say that one instead, because I couldn't find a bad one. So last campaign, last time we were sitting up here, the issue was the Third Street Bridge. Do you all remember that? Maybe some of the naturally highlighted ones in the room know what we're talking about. But there is, if you guys go to the end of Third Street, thank you, there is a bridge. There's no road that connects to Mountain View. And at the time, I was like, "We need this access. It's going to be good for business." This year, four years later, I'm standing in the front yard with my friend Frank Bonjorno, who owns the lot next to where that would have occurred. And we're standing there, he's talking to me, he says, "Put a sign in my yard," and we're having this moment, and there it dawned on me that if we had put money towards a road right there, his life would have been dramatically changed. As it stands right now, it's a beautiful little red bridge, and there's butterflies and rainbows. If there would have been a street there, think of what his life would have been like. So for me, that's an area issue that I'm glad I was one of the one or two that didn't like what the majority voted for, because I really would have felt bad, having stood in Frank's front yard this time and seen what his life turned out to be like.
I'll make it through this one a little easier.
Go fast, you hit your line.
No, it's good. "One thing that I think is a great use of city funds is our Grants Department, which is under the Community Development Branch of the city. Our Grants Department brings in more money to our city than they spend, and the funds that they receive go directly to improving our city. These grants help fill funding gaps that we are not able to fill with local and state funding, and maximize resources beyond our city budget. The improvement projects expand our infrastructure, opening up opportunities for housing and business development that otherwise may not be possible. I went through the budget twice, looking for a poor use of city funds. The challenge of looking through a budget with this type of exercise is it lacks the context and background from the departments and the conversations that typically go along with budget requests and approvals. So, for the sake of this conversation and exercise, one item that I think is not the best use of city funds is the purchase of a tiny mobile robot painter for $28,000. This robot is used for painting sports fields. This robot would still need to have an employee monitor it at all times while it is active." I understand. I understand that the city has a limited workforce, but I think that there are better uses for these funds. "The responsibility of painting the fields could be placed on the end users. I know what it takes to paint football and baseball fields, because for years, I helped my dad paint both Moscow Bear fields for football and baseball. Thank you."
Oh, I've been waiting a long time for this question. I'm sorry, Gina. So I went through this budget several times, and I went through the budgets, all the ones that were published on the city website, all the way back to fiscal year 2007 and '08. And I have some thoughts. That said, I commend the city staff and our public servants for their jobs. Now that said, I have some thoughts. So, in terms of things that I really like about the budget, I'm a small government, small-spending kind of guy, and I think that the government has a duty to its taxpayers to be fiduciaries with our money, with your money. I think that includes roads, public safety, police, fire, and I think we do a very good job of that. Hats off to the MPD, if you're here. Thank you so much for responding to the crisis that happens on a daily basis. So now onto the things I really want to talk about. I have some notes. The stage for East City Park went from proposed $350,000 to $850,000 by Design West. There's a bid for that. I think the bid closes today on the city website, so I think that we really should take a look at that. $320,500 for electric vehicles and lawn mowers. I think that we should be equipping our city staff with very good vehicles, maybe new to us, maybe some Toyota Hiluxes or something, I don't know. But electric vehicles don't do well in cold environments, and they're, quite frankly, terrible for the environment if you look at the mining processes involved. Lastly, $90,000 in unitemized art commodities. I would at least like to see those things itemized. So those are things I think could be done better. That said, I like that the budgets were searchable. Would be cool if it came out in this Excel spreadsheet for people like me. Thanks, guys.
Being a papa with 20 grandkids, well, 19, one moved away, and grandkids in town, the safety of this town is one of the main great reasons that we live in this town. It's safe. If you want to, you could leave your keys on the seat in Walmart, just don't lock them in your car. And nobody's going to come take your car. It's a great town. So with that being said, the police force, I feel like, is one of the most exemplary and important uses of the city budget. And I feel like they're very much on top of that list in keeping this town safe, and we need to really, really support that entity in our town. And I'm going to repeat what John said. I think a poor use of it is of the electric city trucks and the electric lawn mowers. They don't work as well as the gas. They are very, very expensive, and I think at this point in time, that's an expense that shouldn't have been spent. Thank you. I'd echo some of the things I heard, except I want to bring in a caveat, and that is that my prioritizing would be not based on the cost of things, but the sources of revenue. We perhaps badmouth a lot of things that have moved high up in the priority list and look like they're going to get done, because the money comes from grants or federal, state money, and the citizens of Moscow are not actually paying for it. I'm going to have a long debate with John Slagboom someday about taxes and about how the budget actually works. I've also watched the budgets for about 25 years, and I'll be glad to work on that with him, so that he gets a better understanding. We currently, in the city of Moscow, receive about $8 million in property tax, and our expenditures will- and our expenditures will hit 70, 80 million this year. So it shows what we are able to do with money from other sources, fees and grants and all that. If we want to attack property taxes, I'll tell you, it goes into the fund, a fund that has a few things that are discretionary that we can spend as we want. And one of them is what Gary Schoolland talked about is the police force. We get $8 million of taxes that we could do with what we want and our police protection and the, paying the bond for the new police station run about 7 million. So you start finding out when you say, oh, what's, what do you want to eliminate that, uh, you have to really look at who's paying for what. That said, I love the idea of a South Main underpass where we can move bicycles and pedestrians through that busy road in a safe manner. That's one thing I pull out and like some others, the cost and other aspects of the East City Park stage replacement needs to be rethought. Thank you.
So our final question, we'll start at you, Mr. Holmes, and then come this way, uh, is, so there are jurisdictions connected with the city are considering two major infrastructure projects, the construction of a new high school and the construction of a new jail. While the scope of the city's involvement with these projects is limited, as a representative of Moscow, which of these projects would you prioritize?
Well, that's an easy one for me because I was here when we defeated a school bond 25 years ago for $28 million, which would have given us a new high school, elementary school, reworked the middle school and the taxpayers. It got scrambled and, and what they thought the school district were going to do. So we turned down spending that 28 million. And then, uh, we were mandated by the EPA and, and environmental quality agencies about a few mil, a few years later to spend $35 million on a sewage treatment plant. So, you know, we got, we didn't see everything that was coming. Uh, so for me, building a new high school, uh, outpaces the jail. A jail could be downsized to just being a holding facility. I worked in law enforcement for nine years and often you need a jail to hold someone for overnight or through a weekend till they can have their preliminary hearing and go generally free on bond. Uh, if it's, looks like it's going to be longer than that, yeah, we could take them down to the Nez Perce County Jail and continue to rent space there. Uh, but to have the cost of a jail or the cost of a school, I have to do that thinking we could get by with a holding facility here so we're not taking people to Nez Perce County that are only going to be held overnight anyway. And for someone that's going to serve a six to 12 month sentence, I think we could, once again, that, that's only one trip down there for them to go to jail. So I think we need, as Gina pointed out so accurately, we need to talk more about these things. And like I said, had we known that the sewage treatment plant was going to come up and cost us $35 million, we, you know, we might've thought, uh, how much more valuable a $28 million revamped school system would be.
So there's no direct role from the city council for bonding jail or school. That being said, not having a functioning jail in Lake Tahoe County has a tremendous fiscal impact per year on us as taxpayers. The financial burden goes directly to you, the taxpayer. Council members have a role in working together, and this is back to Gina talking, working together to balance the needs of each government agency and, and how that impacts you and I as taxpayers. The public, a public and private, uh, system of trying, of building this, this jail is a way to go without using a bond. And possibly if you did that, uh, it, it's one entity that you could, you could possibly look at. You might be able to do both. You might be able to do the school too. I'd be an advocate for ways to approve this. Thank you.
So I'm going to break the rules a little bit and respond to Mr. Holmes. I know this isn't a debate, but I have two minutes, I'm going to make it fast. Dollars are non-fungible. When you spend money, it's got to come from somewhere. That's right. But you've also got to move it around. So we need to be very careful with our money. Our property taxes are increased by 3% with an additional 1% foregone, meaning an increase of property taxes of $310,000, $310,457 in the fiscal year 2027 budget. And I gave you three items that I consider to be waste, which means we probably wouldn't have needed to spend that money, or we could have moved money around so that we didn't need to spend that money. That said, I did talk with, uh, the Chief of Police of the MPD extensively a couple weeks ago, and we need this jail. We need it badly because it's costing us enormous amounts of money to cart people to and from different county jails. Our police force is currently very understaffed. They're spread thin and they're having a hard time retaining police officers. We need to take care of our police force and we need to take good care of our city. And that means funding the county jail.
Thank you. The challenge I have answering this type of question is, why do we have to choose one over the other? I'm not referring to simply raising taxes or just spending enough money to do both. But I think the city can collaborate with the school district and the county to find ways to do what needs to be done. The school's current facilities are not sufficient to meet our community's needs. The needs for school facilities have changed since the 1970s, when our last public school, McDonald Elementary, was constructed and in the almost 90 years since Moscow High School was built. The existing jail does not meet important compliance standards. I would love to live in a world where we don't need jails, but they are essential to our public safety. What I would prioritize is exploring opportunities to expand our current facilities. I talked to school district officials and I know one option on the table is switching the high school and the middle school, in part because there are more high school students and the current middle school building has more capacity. Swapping school locations, along with strategic expansions and interior improvements of those facilities, could meet the needs of the community at a significantly lower cost than new construction. We could have similar opportunities for our jail facility, but I haven't yet had the chance to learn as much about this issue as I'd like to, and I would prioritize learning about it as a council member. That will take more time, outreach, and discussion with stakeholders about the goals and financial constraints the county faces. But I think that the same logic applies. Why don't we start with what we are trying to solve and then find solutions within our budget to meet those needs? Thank you.
I'm not sure who's tangled in this besides me, but let's, yeah, let's just all smile. So something that I had to learn fairly quickly when I took my, my first, um, steps as a, as a counselor, is to learn what the essential mission of the city actually is. And one of those is public safety. One of the missions, one of the things that we are, are there to give you as a citizen or to, to give you as a citizen is public safety. And while I don't, um, I, I like kids of all ages. I like elementary kids, I like big kids. Building a new elementary school, that's way sexier than a jail. But, but we have to start with the, the mission and then realize we've got a really, really tight budget. Now, there are different ways, and I think, was it John or was it Gary, that mentioned maybe there's other ways we could support a new school? Like maybe the city owns some land and we could help the school district buy that? Or maybe there's partnerships that we don't even know about, but if we sit down at the table and talk about it, maybe there's a way we could support both. But I will tell you that if it came to me today as a counselor, these two, wow, this would be an awful choice, but I would choose the, the jail, absolutely.
Thank you very much, candidates. Uh, everyone, please join me in giving them a warm thank you for coming out today.